Ms. Tally, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form.
Ms. Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
President Kushner, Counselor Bean.
Here.
Counselor Boishman.
Here.
Counselor Beal, Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Donnelly.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Joseph.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Tran.
Before we move to a public forum, I'd just like to ask for a moment of silence for Jack Mulcahy, an active firefighter who passed this past week. Thank you. Public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing a public hearing conditions, have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda of which you're addressing. Anyone wishing to speak at this time? Good evening.
Sharon Bernard, 70, Sawmill Pond Road here in Pittsburgh. I'm speaking to 5217. And because I do live in that southwest corner of the city, to open Fifth Mass Turnpike would be quite convenient for anybody on Mount Elam Road or Rollstone Road areas to be able to get to Route Two in a much safer fashion. I'm often driving Route Two West and traffic pulling out of Mount Elam Road is just awful. If you see a car there, it's panic time because you don't know what they're going to do and there's just nowhere for them to merge onto the highway. Where if they could drive through Fifth Mass Turnpike, go to Oak Hill Road, there's a much better merging lane. So, just wanted to speak to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This will most likely be referred to the Public Safety Committee and will be scheduled in the next several weeks. Public forum. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? To the suspension of the rules, Counselor Cadd. Never mind. If there are no objections, we'll now hear an oral report from the Appointments Committee, Counselor Bean.
President, the Appointments Committee met tonight. We had two appointments before. One was a reappointment for Pauline Bass for Pittsburgh Council on Aging, term to expire March 1st, 2020. And the next one was a new appointment, Boarded Library Trustees for Joan McWilliams, her term to expire January 1st, 2020.
Move the Appointments Committee report be accepted and the appointments confirmed?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Appointments Committee report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. So, I'd like to thank those two individuals here this evening who stood up to help the city out and to offer their services and expertise to the city. So, certainly, thank you. Thank you for your efforts in advance. Report from the Committee on Records, Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have reviewed the records and they appear to be in order.
Move the Committee on Records report be accepted.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the Committee on Records. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor. We have one appointment letter this evening for Ms. Mary Giannetti as a member of the Board of Park Commissioners for term to expire July 1st, 2020.
Will we refer to the Appointments Committee?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send to the Appointments Committee. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Communications and reports from department heads. Counselors, we have one communication. This was sent to you electronically already. It's with you as well, from Anna Farrell, City Clerk, regarding Petition 432017 requesting cancellation of April 4th, 2017, public hearing and a planning board referral and replace with a referral to the City Property Committee as directed by the City Solicitor. Essentially, we referred it to the planning and to a public hearing, and it simply needs to go to Property Committee to begin the process before it will then move forward to the council then. So, I'll be asking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Of a motion and second to cancel the public hearing on scheduled for April 4th and the referral to the Planning Board and replace it with a referral to the City Property Committee as directed by the City Solicitor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Looking forward to under the agenda. Finance Committee oral report, Counselor Dina Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met this evening at 6:00 and took up the following. 3517 up to and including 3917 were authorizations allowing the mayor to sell parcels of land at, two parcels at 172nd Street and then parcels at 11 Orange Street, 25 Albee Street, 73 Fairmont Street. Committee read a letter of support from Treasurer Brooks as part of the side yard sales program, and these were voted unanimously. 4017 ordered that there being hereby is appropriated the sum of $24,750 to be charged against available funds and credited to law expenses, appraisals. That was adopted unanimously. 4117, there being hereby is appropriated the sum of $40,000 to be charged against available funds and credited to law expenses, damages to persons and properties. That was passed. And 4217 confirmed the appropriation of $355,900 from the airport easements, Phase 2 and Phase 3 for the taking by eminent domain, certain aviation easements more clearly identified as per the attached. That was adopted as well.
Motion to approve the Finance Committee's report?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the Finance Committee's report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Counselor, I apologize. In my haste, we skipped through two particular items. First, a special presentation from Pittsburgh Public Schools regarding the Gala Committee. At this time, we have a couple of members here to speak to that gala. Welcome, and I apologize.
We have a number of numbers.
[laughing].
My name is Beth Walsh, and I'm the Vice Chair of the School Committee. First of all, I want to thank the City Council for allowing us this time to present this to you. I wanted to invite each of the members of the City Council and the people who are listening to attend the Third Annual Pittsburgh Public School Gala. It's at Pittsburgh High School on Saturday, May 6th. It starts at 5:30. All of the proceeds from this benefit the after-school program. Claudia Stevens is handing out tickets. There's a package of what the benefit, what all of the programs that this benefits, and there's a ticket for your convenience. So, if you would like to attend, simply write a check, and there's a ticket for you there. And Martha's going to tell you a little bit about the programs.
My name's Martha Clark. I'm principal at Mind Gold Elementary School. And for the past two years, this is the third gala, the past two years, we've raised over $20,000 for after-school programs for the Pittsburgh Public Schools. This year's a really special year because not only will money go to the after-school programs, but they'll also go to a new program here in Pittsburgh called Footprints to Brilliance. And that's a merge between the Footsteps to Brilliance Company and Pittsburgh Public Schools. And what that will do will give literacy to every child in the 01420 area code from age three to age seven. So, there's a handheld device that we use in the schools to access this program. It's an online program. Anybody who lives in our area code can come to the school department, and we'll have various ways to sign up, at civic days and all sorts of other places. And they can sign up and be able to use that program for free. And it provides that literacy instruction at the very early levels and early ages for students coming to our schools. So, we are really excited about this. The money will not only help Footprints to Brilliance be put into our schools, but also, tickets are $50 each, and $30 of every ticket will go towards one of those handheld devices. Any extra money will go towards the after-school programs. So, it's a really special time this year. So, we hope you'll come and hope you'll invite all your friends and even maybe bring a basket or two for the donations to be raffled on.
And there'll be a fine dinner, entertainment, musical entertainment, and great auction items.
And thank you so much for your support for the Pittsburgh Public Schools.
Thank you so much to all of you on the committee. It's been each of the past two years. It's been a tremendous event. It's a wonderful night for the city of Pittsburgh, and it's a wonderful night for our Pittsburgh Public Schools. So, thank you so much to all of you who give your time and energy to make that happen.
And the food's pretty good because I ate there with Jeff.
[laughing].
And counselors, we also have one other item. That was 5517, the Pittsburgh Fire Department 2016 Annual Report.
Move the reading of the annual report and place it in file in the City Clerk's office. Second.
A motion and second to waive the reading of the report and to have it placed on file in the City Clerk's office. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Planning Board, written report to be distributed March 21st, 2017, meeting, sorry, apologize, meeting of March 16th, 2017. Two items before them, 3217 in ordinance amending Chapter 18110 of the Code of the City of Pittsburgh zoning by inserting phrases in the paragraphs referencing light manufacturing, manufacturing and research and testing, reference petition 2016. Also, 33017 in ordinance amending Chapter 18123, Code of the City of Pittsburgh zoning map by changing certain parcels on Bemis Road from industrial zoning district to central business district, reference petition 2212016. Counselors, this was, both items are before you at your seats as well. Just need a motion to accept.
Accept and it will be heard at the hearing.
I'll need a motion to accept, and this will be heard at the hearing shortly.
We will accept the Planning Board's report.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Planning Board's report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. The motion carries. Public Safety Committee oral report, Counselor Green.
First petition, 28416, A.J. Turigny, Chief of Staff to the Mayor, to remove on-street parking along a certain section of roadway on Pearl Street between North and Highland Ave. That motion was granted. Second petition, 045-17, Counselor Dean Tran, to review all no right turn sign locations and remove those that are unnecessary. That was given leave to withdraw.
Motion to approve the Public Safety Committee report?
I have a motion and second to approve the Public Safety Committee report. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Dina Tally.
I have reservations of approving the recommendation for the right, no turn-on-right signs only because I feel it is incumbent upon the council to determine or identify through the Police Department and Mass DOT what the process is for these kinds of matters. Because the way this is going to get disseminated is we're going to give this leave to withdraw, and most people aren't going to watch the proceedings, so they're going to think we just said, "Oh, we're not interested." It goes well beyond that. So, I think the council should do its due diligence at the very least in finding out what the process is through the state legally to have these reviewed and revised if necessary. And that's the only reason why I'm against giving it leave to withdraw. I'm actually in favor of the other petition, but this one, I'm not in favor of giving it leave to withdraw. I would have been in favor of holding it until we get some kind of clarification on the process, and then we can do what we wish at that point. But we should get our ducks in a row on that first. Thank you.
Counselor, I'll just respond, while there was no formal vote to do such, because it wasn't listed on the agenda, the committee was fairly resounding in asking Sergeant Sullivan for a review of the process and a report back. So, therefore, regardless of the outcome this evening, I'd ask for Counsel Green to follow up with Sergeant Sullivan, find out the process. My support of the action taken by the committee, which is to give it leave to withdraw, is that this isn't a viable petition as it is. We've seen, you know, hundreds of petitions over the years pile up in committees because they're simply held, and then we're later, you know, in 2027, we'll be giving leave to withdraw to something. I'd rather take the formal action of kind of a report back from the, or an informal action, therefore, of report back from the Police Department to Counsel Green and Counsel Tran to explain what the process is. And if Counsel Tran is so inclined as to, you know, target specific, or other counselors are so inclined to target specific intersections for review, we can then undertake that process and either apply through the state or a formal action before the council. So, I don't think it was a dismissal of the intent. I think it was rather, this isn't a viable petition, let's review what the process is from the state and city.
Mr. President, I'm not saying it was a dismissal. I'm saying that's how it's going to be perceived. We all know it's not a dismissal, but that's how it's going to be perceived. And unfortunately, perception is reality. By keeping it in the public docket, whenever we get that kind of information from Mass DOT and what the process is, that'll be put into the record, that'll be put into the minutes, and that'll be disseminated at a full council meeting at a later date, so it's in the record and people can access it. So, unless there's a communication means by which we disseminate this publicly for those interested in this matter, I'm not going to support not holding it. Now, as to your point about petitions pile up and you're valid in that comment, but with all due respect, a lot of those petitions are studies that our own internal police department have to conduct when they're razor-thin as it is. So, this, to me, perhaps I'm missing something here, but this, to me, should take a day to find out from a representative DOT what the process is to review traffic signs that they have dictated we have to have there. I'm sure there's probably a law in the books that says this is what we have to go through. That's all I'm looking for, to give back to my constituents who have contacted me interested in this, not so much for it, but interested. So, I would request that we hold out this petition from the report. Thank you.
Counselor Donnelly.
I agree with your sentiments and the objective, but it's not so much just to say that we did something. But I think it should be reworded, a new petition should be put in. So, if we want to request what the process is, this way here, it just says, "Review and remove," and we're not authorized to do that. So, if we put a new petition in and request, what is the process to have for the council or the mayor or the city solicitor or the police department or who else it can be, find out what the process is. Then it's worded, we'll get it worded properly so it can be addressed, one item at a time.
And Counselor Donnelly, to your appointing Counselor Dina Tally, Ms. Clerk just confirmed that we can indeed include that specifically in the minutes as an action item in a specific request to the Police Department. So, that way, it isn't entered as an action item.
What about what the findings are? Is that going to get?
We can ask for that to be disseminated back to the City Clerk and therefore back to the council.
Could come in as a communication.
Could come in as a formal communication to the council and placed on the agenda if you'd.
If that's what we're going to do, then okay.
Counselor Boishman.
You know, we sent the guy in Pittsburgh Police Department to school. He spent, he went to school for about $6,000 to $10,000 if I'm not mistaken, and we paid a heck of a lot of money, heck of a lot of money. Basically, since I started on his council, I confronted him a lot of times. And some of the answers I didn't like when he gave them to me, and some of the answers you guys didn't like either, what he gave to you. Why don't we use him and ask him to help us out if we get a right turn on it? That's what we paid. This city paid thousands of dollars to send him to school, thousands, not 100, but thousands. And his mind is, he's unbelievable. He knows what he's talking about, and he can tell you what the rules are on Water Street, Wallace Ave, any of these, Bemis Road, or any one of these cars that get no right turn on red. I mean, I don't understand what we're trying to accomplish where we can, we got the man right there. He's right here in front of us, and we can ask him the reasons why we can't take the right turn on red out.
Counselor, I would suggest that the police chief assigns a member of the Police Department, in fact, three members, to work specifically with the council to help them work through their requests and for public safety. Two members of the department were here this evening to answer questions to the best of their ability about the process. They've committed to understanding the process better. It's not our job to supersede the chief's decision of who he's appointing to our committee and therefore to the council. So, we take our recommendations from both the chief and the assigned member of the department to the committee. Counselor Dina Tally.
I still want to hold that out if I could, please. Who made the motion? Sure. Thank you.
We have a, we have a motion to approve 28416. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Forty-five, oh, I apologize. One in opposition. We have 04517 before you.
Motion to give.
Make a motion to withdraw?
Second.
Motion and second to give leave to withdraw to 04517. Speaking to the motion, again, that communication will be directed to the Police Department. We'll ask for a formal communication to be directed to the City Clerk and placed on file and to appear on an agenda once that documentation is available. And we'll allow to Counsel Tran or other counselors to then use that process. Do we already take the vote? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Two in opposition. Motion carries. Public hearings. We take, do we do it? Counselors, we'll take both in the same hearing. Two items before us this evening, 03217 in ordinance amending Chapter 18110 of the Code of the City of Pittsburgh zoning by inserting phrases in the paragraphs referencing light manufacturing, manufacturing, research and testing, reference petition 2016. Also have 03317 in ordinance amending Chapter 18123, the Code of the City of Pittsburgh zoning map by changing certain parcels on Bemis Road from industrial zoning district 1 to central business district, CBD, reference petition 22116. Now declare the hearings open. And counselors, I would ask you to keep two things in mind. One, this was a, I believe you received communication about this. This is simply a revote because we missed a particular procedural timing. So, I view this as, you know, the city solicitor and the clerk doing their due diligence, realizing that a particular timeframe lapsed, so we're going back to make sure that we follow everything by the book and fulfill our obligations for timing. So, this had already been passed. And secondly, this will require eight votes this evening. If any counselors have reservations at this point, I'd ask that we recess this hearing for further deliberation at the following meeting. That said, the hearing is now open. If there's anyone here representing the petition, I'd ask them to be seated at the center table. Is there any questions or comments by counselors? Is anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition?
Will the hearing be closed? Second.
All have been heard. Declare the hearing closed. Matters are now before the council.
Will the ordinances be granted? Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 32 and 3317. Speaking to the motion, all those, speaking to the motion, Counselor Green.
I just want to make sure that, that the public realizes that the amended actually reads, "To revise the definition of light manufacturing, manufacturing and research and testing to include renewable or alternative energy manufacturing." On petition 3217, and then on 3317, "To amend the zoning map to change from industrial to central business district, the westerly side of Bemis Road at Duck Mill Road." Just so they're clear on that.
Thank you, Counselor Green. So, I have a motion and second to approve and to be sent to a first reading. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Orders, Finance?
Motion for suspension on 4717.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 4717. Order that the City of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG administered through MEMA that will benefit the dive, swift water and technical rescue teams in the approximate amount of $14,460 for the purposes of said grant. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Will the order be adopted? Second.
A motion and second to adopt 4717. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. 4817.
Motion to suspend the rules on 4817.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 4817. Order that the City of Pittsburgh hereby amends Council Order 17513 to approve the expenditure of additional funds from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health Opioid Abuse Prevention Collaborative Grant in the approximate amount of $819,499.50, an additional $49,499.50 for the purposes of said grant. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion.
One in opposition?
No, 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 I'm not in opposition. I'm in favor of it.
The item.
I was going to ask you a question. That's what I wanted.
Will the order be adopted?
I have a motion and second to adopt 4817. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Boishman.
I was just wondering if Steve Curry could come up and explain the reasons for this, why we suspended the rules and that, please.
Director Curry, good evening.
If it doesn't make a difference, Counselor President.
I would be happy to entertain questions. Mr. Curry.
I will be ready, Counselors.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here.
With me is Tom Hollis, the CEO of Operations of Luck. Luck is the subcontractor for the Massachusetts Department of Opioid Abuse Prevention Collaborative. It involves four cities. It is Pittsburgh, Lemister, Gardner and Athol. As stated, it's an $800,000 grant. And FY17, similar to FY16, DPH is offering us an additional $49,000. It's late in the season. This expenditure needs to be expended by June 30th. It involves several trainings, one including next month where several members from each community can attend a summit in Atlanta, basically a large networking summit where communities get together and strategize on how to address the opioid epidemic. And I think it would be great if members of our police department were involved with that. So, I'm just looking for a quick approval to make those expenditures so I can get them to this summit and spark this grant.
Questions from counselors?
I got a question for Luck. Before we come to budget time, I'm hoping that you guys have been doing a lot better than what I see on the streets and what I'm looking at. Because I'll tell you honestly, this is my opinion, I'm not too happy. So, I hope there's changes coming because it's going to be a tough battle in the budget time. That's what I want to say.
If I can comment on that, the, really briefly, the grant has not had a coordinator since July of 2016. I'm happy to say that a coordinator has been hired. A lot of things are going on. Tom Hollis arranged collaborations with the police, which we've struggled with over the years. Our recovery coach that is under grant with the police will now be working as a recovery coach with the grant. Things are moving in the right direction. I think, I think this training will also help with collaborations and spark interest and new ideas.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
I'm optimistic.
Thank you.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Gentlemen, you will provide a report, I would assume, about this grant and what you have done with this grant and how many lives impacted and what steps you've taken, I would assume, right? Isn't that part of the requirement?
Yeah, it's a difficult thing to track.
Right. I'm sure it's very difficult, but is there any kind of requirement in this grant that requires a follow-up report on the status of what we accomplished?
We both had a quarterly reporting and then an annual reporting to Department of Public Health on it. Unfortunately, and I think people talked about this earlier and in some other ways around the state, the state has a very narrow definition of how you can use this funds. And these particular funds are designed for opioid overdose prevention, lethal and non-lethal. So, even to the point of, it's that very narrow definition of it. So, we're all the time, Steve and I are all the time trying to talk to DPH saying, you know, prevention and treatment, and they're saying, "No, no, no, prevention." But so, one of the things that we're trying to do with, through this funding and through reorganizing this, is really develop better linkages between the treatment and the prevention and the recovery people. Because we need to have all those aspects and components.
Could we please get a copy of the annual report submitted to us? Because before I make an assessment that it's not effective, I'd like to read that report under the context as well of knowing that your scope is dictated by the state is very narrow. As you just pointed out, the money is not to be used for treatment purposes. So, I mean, if anybody has a problem with that, contact your state representative, your state senator. Thank you.
I'll just add, gentlemen, a national epidemic, and certainly there's no simple, nor is there a single answer or solution to this problem. So, appreciate all of your efforts and manpower that goes into. So, appreciate all of your efforts and manpower that goes into these efforts. So, thank you. I have a motion and second to adopt 4817. Speaking to the. Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Move 4917 through 5417, be sent to their respective committees.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 4917 up to and including 5417 to their respective committees. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. I just remind the viewing audience of the earlier presentation and encourage folks to buy their tickets to the Third Annual Public School Gala at Pittsburgh High School on Saturday, May 6th, 2017. I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We adjourn. Thank you, Counsel.